Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 26, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Board of Education. I'm Kate Bornenski, and I want to welcome everyone here tonight. We have a packed house. Additionally, I would like to welcome my fellow board members and ask them to introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Lazarowitz.
Good evening. My name is Leonardo Savage.
Patty McCoyn, thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening. I'm Anupam Chuksedu. Thanks for being here.
Doug Brooks, thanks for coming out tonight.
Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce your staff?
Yes, thank you. Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Elizabeth Adams, and thank her for taking the minutes every board meeting so that people are aware of the business that transpires at our board meetings, as well as Charlie Jones, a man behind the scenes who captures these meetings on video so that all that cannot be present have the ability to see the work that goes on at our board meetings. And I'd like to ask the remainder of the staff to introduce themselves, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening. I'm Len Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Hi, WPO's Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Human Resources.
Good evening. Kurt Tuskwitz, Executive Director of Student Services.
Hello, Mike Bender, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening. Heather Colombo, President, Education Association.
Dalton, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the Agenda and Approval of the Consent Agenda. This is Action Item 190260. Do I have a motion on this, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Agenda for the -- bear with me, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
All right. I'd like to make a motion for the Agenda, adopt the Agenda, Action Item 190260.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Member Lazarowitz and seconded by Member Brooks. Is there any discussion on the adoption of the Agenda or approval of the Consent Agenda? Hearing none. Ms. Merritt, do you want to take us through the Consent Agenda, please?
Yes, thank you, President Bornenski. This evening, the Consent Agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. Believe it or not, our Human Resources Department is still busy hiring champions, so we have a new hire for your consideration, as well as a leave and a resignation. Finally, we have the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on February 12, 2019.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome a new teacher to our school district. Her name is Muna Ahmad. Come on up, Muna. All your colleagues are here with you tonight, so this is good. We are so thankful that you selected our school district. Muna Ahmad will be our new school social worker. She comes to us with 21 years of experience, with a bachelor's degree from University of Michigan Dearborn and a master's degree from University of Michigan Ann Arbor. Welcome. We are very thankful you'll be with us.
Thank you.
Welcome. Congratulations. Welcome to the district. Congratulations, welcome. Welcome.
It is.
Celebrating success. And I am the presenter tonight. Celebrating success this evening will honor Salem High School senior and promising graphic artist Elizabeth Liu. Elizabeth and her amazing talents put PCCS back on the world stage as this past January the North American International Auto Show awarded Elizabeth the $1,000 grand prize of the Chairman's Award for her design as part of the auto show's 31st Annual Poster Design Contest. The creative competition drew more than 750 entries from 58 Michigan schools with the goal of giving young artists the chance to be part of one of the largest auto shows in the world. The poster entries were judged by an independent panel of recognized members of the local art community, and all winning entries, including Elizabeth's, were posted on the NAIAS website and were on display during the public show at Kobo Center from January 12 to 27. The designs were also included in the official event program. We ask that Elizabeth come up to the podium at this time, along with Canton High School Graphic Arts Teacher Tony Vasallo. And Tony, would you please say a few words about Elizabeth and this outstanding accomplishment?
I would love to. Thank you, and good evening, members of the board and faculty, citizens and faculty. Welcome. Just a couple of quick words. You know, many assume graphic design is easy. You download an image, you slap some words on it, Nick knows, but it's --
It's not.
It's actually very difficult at times, and many students realize that when they do enter my class. You know, Lizzie, she went through many revisions, adjusting color, shape and form, drawing and redrawing. She looked at other things for inspiration. I always encourage my students to look outside than just their computer for inspiration for their work. She also kind of went through a lot of details, just every little bit. Bring me over, look over the work, and you know, point out certain things here and there, but finally she was satisfied and she put together an awesome design. It was no surprise to me that she's such a hard worker or any other of her teachers. Since day one, she's just been awesome in my class, and she does make my job a little bit easier, which is great. So, congrats. I know where it's Lizzie. Congrats, Lizzie, and thank you for all your hard work.
This is the poster.
Congratulations, Elizabeth, for this recognition. On behalf of the PCCS Board of Education, I would like to present Elizabeth Liu with the STARS Award, which stands for Students with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success. Elizabeth, would you like to say a few words?
So, first off, I would like to thank the board for presenting me with this award. It's an incredible honor to receive this recognition. I would also like to thank the PCCS District for offering this class. It's, to my understanding, not every school district does offer this graphics design class or graphic design in general to this extent, so it's an amazing opportunity to be able to take this class. I'd also like to thank Mr. Vasallo. He provided a lot of support and guidance throughout the entire project, really helped me go through what my direction of the poster, what I wanted it to be. And I would also like to thank my parents, who were there every step of the way to support my vision for the project, bouncing off ideas and revisions.
Congratulations once again, and Elizabeth and Tony, and probably Elizabeth's parents, too. Why don't you come up and shake the board members' and administrators' hands?
Congratulations.
Very proud. Very proud. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
What a proud moment that is.
Thank you.
You must be so proud.
Congratulations.
We're going to just meet right over there.
Congratulations, for sure.
It's amazing to meet him.
The talent.
Yes.
That's pretty cool.
That's really nice.
We're going to do a quick photo. It's hard to run the meeting and do that and be in photos at the same time. So, next up on our agenda, we are at Letter C, which is Board Committee Reports and Action. First is the President's Report, which I actually wrote up, if I can find it. So, it's been a busy couple of weeks since our last meeting. On February 14, our new board members, John Lazarowitz and Leonardo Savage, and I met with the District Council to go over some orientation and training for them. So, I want to thank them for being available for that meeting. On February 20, Members Brooks, Sido, and I participated in the Modern Learning Presentation and Visioning Meetings, which took place at Salem High School. On February 21, Ms. Merritt and I met with Ms. Colombo from the PCEA and Mr. Portelli from the MEA, and I want to thank them for their willingness to continue to have these meetings. Also, on February 21, Member McCoyn and I sat in on the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. We're not current members of that committee, so I wanted to thank the committee for allowing us to observe that meeting. And finally, also, on February 21, I attended the Wayne County Association of School Boards meeting at Wayne Risa, and as usual, it was a very informative meeting. I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Hammond's class at Farren Elementary School, because they've been sending me some letters. Probably some other people have gotten letters from them. I finally, I want them to know, I finally sent their responses in the mail, so hopefully they can look for those soon. Also, a shout out to the West Middle School students who have been emailing the Board of Education. Thanks for sending us the information about the problems that you're finding and the solutions that you're also finding to those problems. So, that's the end of my report. Okay. And then, next up is the SPA Committee with Member Sido.
Thank you. Our February meeting was canceled due to bad weather, and so we were not able to meet as planned. Our next meeting is March 7, Wednesday, at 4:30 PM in this room. I hope you all can attend, and people listening, I hope some of you can attend as well. We'll be looking at K-12 Activities and Athletics Presentation, as well as the Dual Enrollment Program and opportunities for our schools at the high school level there, as well as discussion around early middle college program opportunities. So, I think all three of those things are going to be very exciting, so if you can join us, that would be great.
So, I think there was a typo on our sheets. I think it's March 6, actually.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Looking at the wrong paper. March 6. It is a Wednesday, though, 4:30 PM.
And next is Policy Committee with Member McCoyn.
We actually had a meeting today at 5:30, so just before this meeting, and we had a very productive meeting. We discussed naming of new facilities, renaming existing facilities, both our policy and what we're going to do with our administrative guidelines. We've done some additional work on our student suicide policy and got some framework for the administrative guidelines to go along with that. We had looked at some policies on employment of personnel and employment of substitutes and assignment and transfer, and then some non-discrimination and equal educational opportunities. Some of those are due to changes in law, and so we have to update our policies so that they adhere to the current laws. So, we are going to be continuing with that. We have a long list of things that we need to get through by the end of the year, and our next meeting will be March 26 at 5:30, down in the Superintendent's Conference Room, and everybody is welcome.
Thank you. Next is Finance and Operations. Member Kiho is not here tonight. Member Brooks, can you give a report?
Sure, sure. Yeah, we met on February 21 at 4:30. There was no public comment, and we approved of the minutes. Let's see, this was presented was the final financial statements, ending 131 on 2019, in 2019. And then, we also covered the Big Bid Package, Number 17, Discovery Partial Roof Replacement that award. The next one was the bus purchase for 14 new buses. And after that, we talked about, we have a couple of action items that we're going to be voting on tonight. One is about benchmark assessment kits. We talked about that, and also, let's see, I mentioned the Discovery Middle School Partial Roof Replacement, and that was about it. We also had, let's see, we didn't, we didn't, oh, we had a discussion about, what is it? Athletic Capital Improvement Funds Discussion, and that was pretty interesting. So, everybody is welcome to come. I don't have a clear date on the next one right now, but it's usually the third Thursday of the month.
I think we have March 7 on our agenda.
Okay, that's the first one, and the next one's going to be probably on the third of that. So, that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Citizens Comments. I have several cards. If anybody else wishes to speak who did not fill out a paper, please see Mr. Brandon. So, everyone who speaks gets three minutes, and the timer will be up there, so you can see how much time you have left, and Mr. Brandon will also be manning that for us. First up, we have Darren Sylvester. Is he here?
I haven't said anything yet. My name is Darren Sylvester. I live in Sunflower Subdivision in Canton. I'm a 23-year teacher. Commonly, when I come here to speak, I need a lot of extra minutes. Today, I have very little else to say, except for one of my friends, a former student, now a colleague, has asked for some support and some help, and so I will reserve the rest of my minutes to Luke Haddad. Thank you very much.
My name is Luke Haddad, and thank you for giving me the time to speak today. The last time I addressed our school board was on December 8, 2015. At that meeting, I was on pace to reach the top of the pay scale in 48 years when I turned 77 years old. The good news is, is that our district is in a better financial position, and the leadership of our district has been positive, and I am now on pace at the top of the 14-step pay scale in 23 years. While not ideal, this is an improvement. We are here today because we look forward to a collaboration, to do what is best for our district and our teachers. Through our speeches, we hope to, one, educate and remind each of you what our teachers have done to help put our district in one of the best financial positions it's ever been in; two, to tell you our stories of how the contracts of the past have personally affected each of us; and, three, to invite you to an opportunity to help make our teachers whole again and improve staff morale. Let's start off with the history of our contracts, going back to 2010. Our step scale was extended from 11 to 14. We have taken two and a half freezes costing any teacher with their master's degree $6,830 every single year. We have paid the district 3.25 furlough days. Our flex spending was cut from $300 to zero. Our classroom spending was cut from $100 to zero. Five additional workdays have been added without compensation. Extracurricular riders have been cut by 10%, and those on the top have only received a total pay raise of 3.25% in the past decade. And according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics, this puts them $9,619 behind where they should be per year, just according to the cost of inflation alone. To be fair, under your leadership Superintendent merit, our contracts have improved the past three years. We have been given a step each year, and those at the top have received raises. The problem is, the freezes and lack of raises from the previous years have set each of us back so far. I personally am behind $6,830 every single year from where I should be, which has already cost me $35,516. And even if we get a step per year, the rest of my career, I will be out over $100,000, all because of the two and a half freezes at the beginning of my career. These previous contracts happened to us because the economy was bad. We were getting out of a recession as a country, and the teachers accepted these contracts to help save our district. And if we are expected to take bad contracts when our district is low on our general fund, what should we be expected to accept when our district is in one of the best financial positions it has been in in over the past decade? Today, you will hear from a couple of my colleagues, who will speak to how the past contracts have personally affected them. But first, let me share my story. Beyond just the normal day-to-day, part of my job filled with lesson plans, grading...
Luke, your three minutes are up. Oh, I'm sorry. You got two more.
No problem, no problem.
Sorry about that.
Grading...
Can we fix the alarm?
Let me go, go ahead, sorry. Beyond just the normal day-to-day, part of my job filled with lesson plans, grading, and engaging 150-plus students. I also do bus duty, lunch duty, teach guitar, teach chess during the summer, co-run student council, and help run the yearly DC trip. I am spread thin, and we all are spread thin. I am not able to go to my students' basketball games or band concerts. I am not able to even put my own daughters to bed every night, including tonight, as I stand here sharing with you the plight our teachers have faced. I have to provide for my family, and my day honestly just feels like running from one job to the next and missing out on experiencing moments both with my school family and my family at home. This is how the concessionary contracts have affected me. What you will hear, contain to hear throughout tonight's speeches and future speeches are personal stories of how the contracts affected individuals, and while every story will be different, a common theme will be that the past decade's worth of contracts have negatively affected us in one way or another. Last board meeting, you were presented with the state of the finances for Plymouth Canton Schools. You were told that our general fund will end up at $34.2 million, which puts us at a fund balance at over 20%. To put this number into perspective, this is about four and a half million higher than what was expected going into the year, and what is even more astonishing is that our fund balance has more than doubled from the 2015-2016 school year alone, where it was slightly under $15 million. In the past, we have been told that while we would like to take care of our teachers, the money isn't there, and that's just not the case anymore. That is why so many of my colleagues and I are here on a Tuesday night to tell you that this is your opportunity. You have the ability to give multiple steps. You have the ability to give a raise across the board to all steps that is at minimum with cost of inflation. You have the ability to restore bus and lunch duty. You have the ability to bring coaching and activity stipends up to where they should be, and you have the opportunity to right the wrong that has happened to each of us over the past decade. Our own PCCS dynamic plan has the goal, attract, hire, and retain highly qualified employees. This is how we do it. You retain your highly qualified employees by taking care of your loyal educators who have weathered the storm over the past decade, and reward them with a contract that shows the district's appreciation of both their sacrifice and hard work. You attract and hire highly qualified employees by showing anyone interested in working in Plymouth Canton Community Schools that they prioritize and value their teachers, and that this is the district to thrive in. Recently in the news, we've been called loser teachers, and I stopped and I asked myself not just how such a statement could be made, but how it could be defended. We lose sleep when our students struggle, and we lose money buying supplies for our classes and students. We lose our nights and weekends lesson planning, and we lose time with our families working late nights. We've all lost money due to the concessionary contracts we have taken to help save Plymouth Canton Community Schools. But we are not losers. We are educators. We inspire and lead lifelong learners and put everything we have into this calling every single day. So, as we go forward, we ask that you acknowledge our calling as teachers, and remember that we need to be supported, because as we've said over and over again, supported teachers equals successful students. Thank you for your time.
Next is Dana McGuire.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and others that are gathered here tonight. My name is Dana McGuire. I am a parent and a teacher in the district. I need to be honest, that when I was first asked to help paint a picture for you tonight, I declined. I am extremely fortunate that my husband has a job in which he has received raises each year, so we may not be struggling as much as others. I reached the top of the pay scale the year that it was extended to include more steps. I was blessed to never have to deal with a step freeze. However, once I started thinking back on it, I realized that although I am extremely blessed, often throughout the second half of my 20-year career here in PCCS, I have not felt valued in the way that we have been compensated for our work. Every year, every day, we are asked to do more and more work for less and less money. We are stretched thin, and it's beginning to show. It is a privilege and an honor to work with the children and families that I support each and every day. I would not trade this for the world, and yet, when I look around to see my friends with similar or even less education than me in other careers, I have to sit in awe of the compensation that they receive. I've come to realize that 3.25% over the past 10 years is just not acceptable, that I need to speak on. When I first became a teacher in PCCS, a raise was an automatic, a given. You got a step each year. Plus, most years, there was also an increase at the top. As a young teacher, it was explained to me that a raise at the top would benefit me in the long run. I grew to understand and appreciate that logic. Unfortunately, as the co-facilitator of the new teacher induction program, I can no longer say the same thing to the new teachers that I work with. The new teachers may never reach the top of the pay scale, and that's just unacceptable. Those steps are no longer a given, and that is a shame. I am aware of the legislation that took this given away. However, I still believe that there is a mindset which the board could have that would help support teachers rather than devalue them. One of the many things that I have volunteered for is to be on several hiring committees at our building. It is a shame to see quality teachers with excellent experience end up declining a position offered to them because of a lack of compensation for their experience. Another issue we're all going to have to face is that this year alone, in my building, we lost three highly involved, accomplished teachers to local surrounding districts because they were offered pay equivalent to the years that they have taught. They left because they feared that our board would never help them regain the steps they lost during the freezes. I urge you to support our teachers in three ways. One, make steps a given. Two, find a way to restore steps for those that were frozen. And three, allow for bargaining of a significant raise at the top, not just a measly 3/4 of a percent. I am proud to be a Plymouth Canton Community Schools parent. I am proud to be a Plymouth Canton Community Schools teacher and leader. I am proud to be the Plymouth Canton Education Association Secretary and Seniority Chairperson. I simply ask you to remember that supported teachers equals successful students. Thank you.
Next is Jennifer Mara.
My name is Jennifer Mara, and I am a teacher at Discovery Middle School. I thank you for taking the time to listen to my story and therefore getting to know me. I was a teacher for eight years before I came to our district. I wanted to teach where I lived. I wanted to be in the same district where my kids are. In 2014, I was hired to East Middle School to teach three different preps. Additionally, in my first week, I was recruited to join the PBIS team and to be a lunch duty supervisor. I was hired in at Step 1, and yet I brought with me eight years of experience. I was told Plymouth Canton does not grant steps. In my ninth year of teaching with a master's degree, I made only $43,954 and gave my all to my job despite making over $21,000 less than I would have. to my job despite making over $21,000 less than I would have if granted experience. Then, at the end of the year, I was laid off and waited until August to be called back to be the EL teacher at Discovery. Since being hired, people all around me have been hired in at Step 5, Step 7, and Step 8, despite the fact that I was told Plymouth Canton does not grant steps. Even at my own school, teachers were recently hired in at a point I had waited years to get to, Step 3.5. Currently, I am in my 14th year of teaching and met a Step 4.5, resulting in over $28,000 loss of wages per year from what I deserve. Over the last five years I've worked in Plymouth Canton, I am short $140,000. Even if we get a step per year for the next decade, I will have been shorted by over $400,000. Let me explain what I do in a given day. On average, I have 50 students on my caseload. In my time at Discovery, I have been in over five CO TOTS while teaching two different EL sections, constantly accommodating tests and assignments for 50 students across three grade levels and sometimes 12 different core classes. Despite these demands, I have continually increased READA scores, resulting in 12 students exiting the EL program last year. In addition to the rigor of my job, I am also Discovery's testing coordinator, student council co-sponsor, and DC trip sponsor. I also do lunch duty and bus duty. I am spread thin. We are spread thin. This last year, teachers also lost the classroom supply $50 stipend. This money is the only money I would ever receive to buy supplies for my students, as EL teachers have never gotten anything to buy from our department because Title I money cannot be used to buy supplies. So I bought my own classroom supplies with my own money. I watch teachers get money for their classroom supplies from their departments while I receive none. I continuously get punched in the gut watching teachers hired in numerous steps ahead of me despite the fact I was told Plymouth Canton does not grant any steps above Step 1. I will have lost out on hundreds of thousands of dollars over my career, and yet I stand here before you not bitter, not resentful, not asking for anything I'm not deserved. I just ask that you remember me, and remember my story, and remember that supported teachers equals successful students. Thank you.
Next is Charles Hamlin.
Faculty members, citizens, Ms. Bennett, Bedala. Good evening, board members. My name is Charles Hamlin. This is the seventh year that I've been employed by Plymouth Canton Community Schools as a science teacher, and I am currently on Step 4.5. Like Mr. Haddad and others who have spoken before me, I've weathered the storms of hard financial times and have been burdened with financial stresses because of decision-making that was well beyond my control. I voted down past concessionary contracts time and again because they lacked the ability to define our worth as educators and as human beings. Without your teachers and support staff, there are no successes to speak about. From PCCS. No AP scores to boast about. No IB, no STEM, no arts academies to bring in new families. There are no clubs, no plays, no dances, no marching band, no Science Olympiad, no world-renowned culinary program, no robotics team, no field trips, no mock trials, no marketing courses, no graphic design awards. Congratulations, by the way. No auto shop, no radio station, no Salem Rock Cafe, no athletics, no notoriety. Simply stated, there is no district without us. There is no education without us. We are Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Within the field of education, things are continuing to change dramatically. Teacher education programs are diminishing, enrollment numbers and graduation rates are down significantly, fewer and fewer are choosing to enter this field. Most recently, in my own department, there were seven applicants for an open position, one that was vacated only after a semester of employment this year. Why would somebody leave halfway through the year? It's pretty simple. We're overworked, we're underpaid, and we're underappreciated. We are no longer just teachers of curriculum. We are counselors, surrogate parents, disciplinarians, life coaches, paper pushers, social workers, serial meeting attendees, professional emailers, letter of recommendation writers, curriculum mappers, vape confiscators. Thank you. Professional hoop jumpers, miracle workers, metaphorical punching bags, some of us probably a little bit more than metaphorical, crisis interventionists, IEP and 504 accommodators, psychoemotional profilers, referral writers, and unofficial SWAT team members in the event of a school shooting. There is more money to be made in the private sector, and to be certain, other fields are flawed as well, but I have to wonder why in the state of these dire conditions would the board not want to retain its highly trained teachers? We are becoming harder and harder to find and even harder to retain. If the students voiced the need for change in my classroom, I would listen, and I would act. The teachers in your district are using their voices. It is my hope that the district's hardworking teachers will be recognized and rewarded in a truthful, truly meaningful way. As it stands, there is little incentive to stay motivated. Our teachers are tired. Our teachers deserve better. I've witnessed the successes of collaboration and cooperation of teachers and administration in Los Angeles, Denver, West Virginia, Oklahoma, to name a few. As a culture, it's time we begin to place value on those who teach us and inspire us to lead the future. I am certain Plymouth Canton Community Schools can be at the forefront of such movement, if they choose to be so. It's time the district begins to inspire by setting an example for others to follow.
Can you wrap up?
I absolutely will, ma'am. Thank you. It's time that the district takes care of its own. Supported teachers equals successful students.
Okay, and next is Dalton Barthold.
My name is Dalton Barthold. I'm a Canton senior, and I say this all the time, but I respect you guys so much. So thank you for listening to me. Today, I brought Danny along, who's going to talk to you guys, actually. He's much more important than I am.
Hi, my name is Danny. I'm a freshman at Salem High School, and I am a student of choice. I was choosing between a few other schools in PCCS, and I went to PSET because of their amazing theater program. A few reasons that I love the theater program, Park Players, that we have here, is the professionalism of the program. I really enjoy the people that are so dedicated to the program. The directors are so, like, very, they're very accepting of their people, and they help so much to, like, further my passion of theater. And then, I really enjoy, like, the quality of the productions that they put on. When I first saw it, it blew my mind. I saw Curtains last year, their spring show, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. The caliber of the productions is, like, just a combined effort of all the students that care so much about it. I've seen, like, a few productions where, like, students don't care, so there's not much, like, power behind it. But with this program specifically, there's so much power that's put in behind all these students who care and are so talented. The dedication of the class and crew really add to, like, all of the great things about this program, and I would really appreciate if theaters, like, the Little Theater and the Gloria Logan were able to be improved so that students like me could have, could, like, continue to do what I love to do and continue to do what they love to do with better facilities, and I deserve the same educational quality as anybody else. Thank you.
So next up, we're at letter, oh, I don't have any other cards that I know of. Did anyone else want to speak? So now we're at letter E on our agenda, which will be back there in a moment, which is administrative reports and recommendations. And first up is the superintendent's report.
I think it's really timely that Dalton had an opportunity to share a few messages, a message with us today. I had the opportunity of sitting down with Dalton, as well as another senior, Madison Wiley. They were guests on my Moments with Merritt show, talking about the Park Players, and that truly just has been a mainstay program here in our district, but more importantly, just the talent that is a part of the Park Players. I just really appreciated that opportunity to talk with them and the impact that that program has made on their lives. The Park Players in news, they're coming out with their, Les Misérables. It's March 15th. Help me with the date, Dalton.
15th, 16th, and then the weekend after that, Friday and Saturday, 24th, 25th, maybe-
That's right. So 15th, 16th, 23rd, 22nd, 23rd, Gloria Logan Theater, they're having their production of Les Misérables, so we encourage everyone to come out and support our Park Players. They are amazing young people. Also, I want to remind everyone that tomorrow is our second late start. Is that tomorrow? Thursday. Thursday. Thursday is our final late start of the school year. This is really an important day for our teachers to get together to have professional development. So as a reminder, that school starts an hour later. When you think about bus riding, you come on the bus one hour later than your normally scheduled time. All schools or programs are on this schedule except for our GSRP, as well as our preschool programs. They will not participate in the late start. So just a reminder that that takes place on Thursday, one hour late. Finally, PCCS is ready to welcome our family, your young families, to the district. Kindergarten registration will begin on Monday, March 4th. This is at your home school, and the district asks that you register your student by Friday, March 8th. Students who turn five years old by September 1st are eligible to attend kindergarten for the 2019-20 school year, and more information and details on the registration process, as well as our kindergarten program, those are available in this week's newsletter. So please, take a look, and we look forward to welcoming you. And although I wasn't prepared to say, I just can't let this moment end without addressing our wonderful teachers in the audience, not as a response to Citizens Commons, because that's not what we do, but just as a message that, first of all, you are valued and you are appreciated. And I think when you look around this table, either you have teachers or former teachers or married teachers, there's a connection in the support of our profession, and we have been attacked over years. And I hope what you heard, I heard Luke actually support, is this current board and current administration, we are looking forward to continuing to value our profession. We believe in competitive wages. We believe in supporting our teachers. We believe in the process of IBB, and we are at the table, and I am quite confident that we will continue to work together to support what we're saying, because what I think that we are trying to demonstrate to you is our actions speak louder than words, and as you've said, we are on that path to looking forward and getting better, and we know that we can't do it without you. So thank you for your voice. It matters. You'll hear us continuing to say that, and I look forward to working together in this process.
Next is Teaching and Learning, Dr. Bender.
Thank you, President Borninski. This evening, Principal Dr. April Quasarano and members of the Dotson faculty are very excited to share how they personalize learning for students and nurture positive relationships with families. Dotson is a community of learners as teachers regularly engage in professional development to strengthen their practices to support the needs of all students. Here to get us started is Dr. Quasarano.
Good evening. So the purpose of our role, oh, Nick, you got it. Let me grab the remote. Hang on. Okay. So the purpose of our role is to increase student achievement by establishing and maintaining support mechanisms for all students specifically targeting our underperforming demographic groups. Our school leadership team, which consists of Beth Sexton, Leslie Corrigan, Jill Dean, and Lynn Kennedy behind me, supported by some of our Dotson staff that was able to come tonight, has analyzed our academic performance of all our student groups and considered the effectiveness of our intervention programs that we use. Our data has provided us the opportunity to embrace the strategy of individual goal-setting and personalized learning. Personalized learning. Our core content areas of English, Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies remain at the forefront of our teaching in our school. But utilizing this strategy of personalized learning allows our, an opportunity for our students and teachers to set goals while we continue to progress monitor for students. Our team will now walk you through what personalized learning looks like with students, family, and staff.
All right, so at Dotson, we are focused, as Dr. Quasarano said, on personalized learning and setting growth goals with progress monitoring. And here at Dotson and everywhere else, we do data. So we use the fall and the spring NWEA data results. We use the new BAS assessment plans and both formative and summative assessments in the classroom to set goals for our students, to monitor their progress, and to provide an opportunity for growth for all of our students.
In grades K through 5, students and teachers work together to set goals. We know that students who take part in the goal-setting process improve their academic performance, increase their motivation to learn, foster a pride in their work, and improve their self-confidence. Each student sets what we call a SMART goal, and SMART stands for specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and timely. Teachers and students use the results from the NWEA tests and the BAS kits to help set these SMART goals together. As part of Reader's Workshop, we utilize that time to work on students' individualized goals. At Dotson, we take place in strategy groups, which relate specifically to students' needs. Our strategy groups provide the teacher and students as a way to focus on growth, including all of our students, which include our underperforming demographic groups. The grades, in grades K through 2nd, we also use the eSpark program to work on these individualized goals.
At Dotson, we believe in meeting our students where they are at and then helping them to move forward. In this upper-grade level example, students are receiving small ability-grouped instruction that is flexible and fluent, while others are either involved in front-loading the lesson or independently working on the concepts. In lower elementary grades, math rotation centers are offered with iXL Math and eSpark learning and one-to-one time with the teacher. By utilizing mini lessons with small groups and choice centers, this provides students a variety of options, such as timed exercises, projects, and online learning. In all grade levels, once a student shows that they've mastered the foundational skills of the lessons, the teacher can track understanding, figure out where students need additional scaffolding or other assistance, and tailor choice lessons accordingly. Culturally responsive instruction is a means to elevate all students to their highest potential and work towards closing the achievement gap. We choose to embrace and celebrate all students of all cultures and backgrounds. We do this by making sure we address and reflect on our own beliefs, expectations, assumptions, and relationships with the goal to provide access to learning for all students. We use curriculum, literature that reflects our students, English learner supports, translation software, and a shared belief system that embraces and celebrates all students and their voices.
So at Dotson, we have initiated Class Dojo as a school-wide to promote community unity throughout Dotson with the areas of positive behavior initiatives, classroom management, family involvement, and communication. We also continue our community relationships with the Canton Police Department, Plymouth Optimist Club, student-led credit community, student-community credit unit, credit unions, and junior achievement. At Dotson, our teams meet in PLCs to discuss the students and the strategies to align with our own data needs. We also are in the beginning stages of instructional rounds and working hard towards stronger teaching practices. Overall, Dotson is a team of learners. We believe in common culture. We also believe in growth mindset, the power of yacht, and lastly, perseverance.
We like to take care of the teachers at Dotson, not just the students, because we all know that supported teachers equals successful students. So we engage in a number of book studies and discussions to help teachers reflect on their own practices, and this year, with the Zen teacher talking about our mental health, too. When teachers take care of themselves, they have a healthier approach in the classroom, and that helps everyone to grow.
Personalized learning is just one part of the bigger picture. Educating and embracing the whole-child approach is paramount in a student's development. It is also the expectation that every student at Dotson feel known and valued. Each day, our students reset our shared motto at the bottom of our slide, which you will hear on our next slide. So at Dotson, we make it our mission to- So at Dotson, we make it our mission to elevate every student every day, and they're about ready to tell you why.
Behavior Matrix.
Situational Intervention Team.
Robotics.
Inquirer.
Inclusion.
Adult Yoga.
Student Volunteer.
Safe Seas.
Student Council.
Weather Club.
Sensory Hall.
Restorative Practices.
City Square.
Pizza.
Lego Club.
Autism Awareness.
Pumba.
Hypism Month.
A blast.
I L S L.
Academic Vocabulary.
Dotson Council.
E-Spark.
Common School Culture.
Dolphin Days.
Peaceful Pod.
Dotson Elementary School is the place for community diversity and to strive to become productive, vibrant, and active.
I like the one on the end with her hand on her heart as she says our pledge. We take it serious there. To the board, we recognize the extraordinary dedication that you play in promoting and advocating equality education for our students. And we thank you for this opportunity to just give you a quick glimpse into some of the things that we are doing at Dotson. Are there any questions?
Questions? John?
Question. E-Spark, can you explain to me, E-Spark?
I would love to, but I would be even more happy with one of you.
E-Spark is an online program.
Okay.
Well, here we go. Teacher in.
Teach me, E-Spark.
E-Spark is something new in our school. We wanted to afford the kids an opportunity for additional materials that would support our regular curriculum. And so there's a couple of programs we've been using. One is called IXL Math. And in that particular program we do for K through 5, that the students first take a diagnostic, so they see where they are at. And then there are certain goals. And we also match certain skills based on the lessons that are being taught. And as they do the IXL Math, when they do these different skills, they see right away whether they are correct or not, and if it's not, it explains why. E-Spark is very similar to that. We've used it thus far in the lower elementary, and we're going to be piloting it now for 4th and 5th grade, and that will begin next month where we will be doing it for ELA and also for math.
Do you see like growth in math and reading?
Absolutely.
With E-Spark usage?
With E-Spark and with IXL Math.
So both systems, you see?
So it allows for the individualized learning and matches where their NWEA scores. And then we take a look at where their BAS scores align with those and provide specific skills that they're working towards. We are doing a program evaluation next week on Tuesday. So we can have specific data on where we are with those specific programs. But thus far, since the pilot, our informal assessment would be an increase based on our winter NWEA scores based on, from the prior year.
Now, is that at every elementary school or just Dotson? E-Spark?
I can't answer that. That would...
The E-Spark for the 4th and 5th grade is going to be located only at three elementary schools because it's a pilot program that they're putting us into. And it is tied into the NWEA scores that they have, similar to something we've done in the past called Compass Learning. But we found that that program, when we evaluated it, was not as effective as we would have liked it to be.
So what are some of the challenges using E-Spark? You guys notice any?
So we are looking at Tuesday to do more of a in-depth dig to a program, the program evaluation for it. We also have some conference calls set up with E-Spark within the classroom. So the teachers have been taking data on if they were, you know, kicked out of the program, if something doesn't align with the specific skill that their student had. I mean, we have a skill range within the classrooms. I mean, we have some first graders working at 4th and 5th grade levels, you know, so we're looking for what specific skills that we need that they're requiring with their BAS and NWEA that we would need to see E-Spark provide for those individualized, personalized learning.
And so the teachers are getting enough time to using E-Spark during the class?
Yes.
Or is that?
Our goal is that the children will be in the classroom using E-Spark learning three times a week for 20 minutes, sort of be a solid hour.
So the...
And then they will also additionally in upper L will require it at home. Though it's already been in use in K through 2 already, which has, they've been using on their iPads, their one-to-one devices, which are iPads for the lower L. It's been very effective for them. E-Spark saw this, the company. They have started the process to develop for the older grades. We are piloting it to see how it is at this point for E-Spark. It is not fully developed for us to have more than a four-week window. But by fall, there will be more, they say. So we're going to try it. The district has selected us to try that for 4th and 5th to see if it's beneficial in comparison to another program.
All right, I got one. One last question, I'm sorry. What is a sensory hallway?
So the sensory hallway, how exciting is this? We are, I'm looking back here. No, this is fantastic.
I saw it, I saw it on the dolphin.
Actually, we invite you to come.
Yes.
It looks like it's a lot of fun. Now, is that at every elementary school?
So what we have developed for Dotson is they have decals on the floor that provide a whole-body experience for students. And we also, if you heard the word peaceful pod, an area in which students can find a place to call themselves or a quiet reading place or a quiet space. The sensory hallway has been used with full classrooms of students. It's been used with students who just need to take a break. They'll say, Ms. Corgan, can I go quickly run through the sensory hallway? They'll walk down the hall, they'll go through the sensory hallway and get themselves back and ready to learn. So this is something new to us that we have just started, and we are still working out some of the fine details, but excited that the students love it. And anyone who's visited us, I think I'm looking around the table, Nick went through it, thought it was a good time.
Still tired.
There's various activities similar to like brain gym.
Okay.
Where they have to, they have to skip, they have to tiptoe, they have to do balance, they have to go against the wall, they're following directions. And the kids, once they've been through it once, they know exactly what to do. And when you go into that particular hallway, we've painted it so that it is very lulling. It's blue, and blue is a peaceful color for kids. And even with the windows, not the windows, but the lights, we have shades on it. So it's a very soothing area. We have found, we've been doing the testing for NWEA, so sometimes kids need a break.
Sure, like a brain break, right?
Yes. And we say, go take a walk. They go down to the sensory hallway, then they come back, they're ready to go.
We need one of those in here. Other questions?
Oh, sorry.
No, we're happy to share.
Actually, John asked a lot of my questions about E-Spark, but to Dr. Bender, how many schools are piloting E-Spark besides Dotson?
There are four right now as well, yes. So we have Smith, Hoben, Farron, and Dotson are involved in that. One of the great values of E-Spark as well, it's adaptive in nature. And so when the Dotson team is talking about that personalized learning, it really takes a student from where they are to where they can be. And so as a student engaged engages with this particular program, it provides an appropriate challenge for the student to support their learning and help them to continue to advance, again, taking them from where they are to where they can be.
So is that something the whole district can use?
We're again studying that at this point, so we're piloting that. We will evaluate that in the spring and then make some recommendations for the future.
Okay.
Please remember to be, wait to be called on.
I apologize.
Members, you do?
I just want to say, well done on the presentation. Thank you. It's good to see my Dotson family.
Thank you. We miss Jushin. Thank you.
And I was just going to give a shout out to my kids' former teachers who, three of the four had my kids, so. Thank you so much. As most of the board knows, Dotson has a special place in my heart, so I always enjoy the presentations. Okay. Next, we have another presentation, right?
Yes, thank you, President Borninski and members of the board. PCCS provides comprehensive programming for students with varying levels of cognitive and physical abilities. We are committed to supporting the needs of all students with an individual education plan so they can thrive during their school experience and in life. This evening, we'll be sharing an overview of the programming we provide for students with IEPs. And here to start our presentation is our Executive Director of Specialized Student Services, Julie Woodhams.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bender. Oh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for this opportunity. We are excited to share information about students with disabilities or students with IEPs in Plymouth Canton schools. And we have six areas that we'd like to talk a little bit about this evening. One, we want to talk about some important connections in our department and sort of some pieces that provide us some base of information that sort of give us a roadmap of the work that we need to do. We want to talk a little bit about some data and some of our programs, quick overview of all of our programs. We want to, we'd like to give you a little overview of some very specific department work that we're focusing on this year. We'd like to talk a little bit about our connections to Teaching and Learning and that critical connection. Would like to have a little bit of discussion by level. I've invited my supervisor group to come and share a little bit about each of their levels. And then we want to talk briefly about what we're looking forward to in the next couple years. So as we dig into this, the first thing, as I shared, I wanted to kind of talk about our roadmap and our driving forces in our department. And one of them, of course, is our dynamic plan. We've shared with you before with our Teaching and Learning team how critical the dynamic plan is to our work and some of the areas of focus. So I don't want to, I don't want to reiterate that, but to just remind everyone that we are well-connected to that dynamic plan. One of the, one of the second thing that sort of provides us a little direction in our roadmap are some beliefs that our department has worked together to create. And whenever we have a decision to make, whenever we have some money to spend, whenever we have something we want to do, we always ensure that we are using the lens of these beliefs. And these beliefs are collectively so important to us. They include every student achieving academic success and emotional resilience, cultural competence, the lens we use when we do our work. Every student is a general education student first, and our job is to ensure that we are providing all the supports they need and moving away from that only as needed. We believe and demonstrate relational trust. This work is really difficult and we need to trust each other to form a good, comprehensive team to do this work. Every parent is a respected partner and their input is vital. We can't do this work alone, so we know we must partner with parents. And then state rules and regulations are mandated, and whether we like it or not, we must meet compliance and pay particular attention to that work. So those are the beliefs that we, that we are driven by. Another part of our roadmap, sort of the third piece of our roadmap, is the goal of special education that is provided to us by the Michigan Department of Education. And it has two big components, meeting compliance and also ensuring outcomes for students with IEPs and providing them a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. So you'll hear some of those terms as we continue our presentation. And also, I put on the bottom of that slide, just a reminder of the definition of special education is specially-designed instruction to help students with disabilities reach their maximum potential. So that's also really important for us to always remember. And sort of the last driving force that we want to talk about today is the second bullet on that slide, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which is the federal legislation that outlines all the compliance indicators that we must follow. And this slide also has a couple other terms in it, and we're not going to review them today, but you do have a glossary that I shared with you that I'm hopeful you can refer to if we use any of this terminology as we continue our presentation. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Anna. Yes. So now let's dig into a little data. We keep a lot of data as we look at our numbers and we look at trends because that's important as it also guides our work. So this slide represents the number of students with IEPs in our district over the past three years, gives us a little three-year trend. And you can see that in Plymouth Canton, we fall really between a 10 and 11% of students in our district. K-12 have IEPs. This year, we have 1,920 students, K-12. That does not include our preschool numbers and our post-secondary numbers because it throws off the percentage of students without IEPs. So we have 2,000, a little over 2,060 students with IEPs if we include all of our students, 0 to 26. And you can see the State Department falls around 13% pretty consistently. So we are under the state percentage, but pretty consistent in our numbers. This slide is also really important to us. Each year, we take a look at all the 13 areas of disabilities and we identify the number of students with IEPs that fall in each of those categories. This is really important because we want to see trends. This helps us know where we want to put our PD dollars, where we want to put our PD time. It also helps us identify staffing needs. So there are two critical parts of this that I want to share. We have two areas of disabilities that have been pretty consistent in their growth. One is right about in the middle of the slide, it's called Other Health Impaired, and it has increased 25% over the last 10 years. And that is an area that we expect to continue to increase. Those are students that have chronic health conditions. A lot of times, students with attention deficit fall into that arena. And then if you look, the third from the bottom, Autism Spectrum Disorder, has increased 50% over the last 10 years. And that is certainly not a surprise to us and probably to you as we hear a lot about that nationally, that has increased. So again, you can see why we pay attention to those because that's what we want to spend, we want to ensure we're putting some PD time into that, and we want to make sure we have staff that really can meet the needs of those students. Another area that we keep data in is called, something called our strand report. It comes from the Michigan Department of Education. We sort of call it our report card, and we get it four times a year. And there are some performance indicators that the state has created. The state believes that these performance indicators, if done well, will document that we are really moving in the proper direction and providing students the services that they need. So they have several performance indicators, but I pulled out a few of them here that are the most critical ones for us. And what happens is they create the performance indicator and then they identify their target, what we should be meeting to be in compliance. And then I've listed what Plymouth Canton has reached with that target. You can see they're a bit behind in their data. That's just because that's how they report. It takes them quite a while to get their data out to us. But you can, a couple of things I want to point out, our graduation, we are mandated by the state to, in order to be in compliance, to be over 80% of our graduation with cohorts of students that have a little bit longer to graduate. They look at that six-year cohort. And we are at 84%. We're really proud of that because that's been an area that we really have seen increase in, and we've put a lot of efforts into that area. Another area that we're really proud of our work in is educational environment. 80% or more of our students, the number or the percentage of students that are in general education, 80% or more of their day. We must be over 63%. We are at 81%. That's an area that over the last several years, we've really worked hard because we recognize that students really benefit from being in general education as much as they can. And then you'll see a couple areas on the bottom that we have a little bit of work to do. So secondary transition, each student, as they leave high school, needs a transition plan for their future. And those transition plans have gotten very complex in their writing, and so we have, we were out of compliance on a few of them on how they were written. And then timely IEPs, every IEP has a one-year lifespan, and we have to ensure that we have a new IEP before that lifespan is over. We have about 3,000 IEPs we write every year, and we had two of them out. And two is too, too many, so we still have to put a plan in how we make sure we reach 100% compliance on those. The next thing I want to talk about is disproportionality. You may remember, I've talked about that for several years. In Plymouth, we are disproportionate for the number of African-American students with IEPs that are suspended and expelled. In Plymouth, if you are African-American student with an IEP, you may be suspended or expelled four times more likely than students without an IEP. And so this is a significant, this puts us in a significant disproportionality range, and we know that it is not okay. And we have work to do to ensure that we are improving in this area. And so because we are significantly disproportionate, we have some requirements that we have to do. We have to spend 15% of our federal budget, our federal special dollars, in early intervening services. We need to have a monitoring visit. The state comes out and reviews our policies, practices, and procedures to see if they are in line. Because you can be disproportionate and still have your policies, practice, and procedures in line. And then we have some public reporting, and that's what we're doing tonight, making sure that we publicly report the results of our disproportionality visit. So as an outcome, we have created a social... So as an outcome, we have created a social-emotional learning project. That's how we're spending our 15 percent. We believe that if students are being suspended later in years, that having some social-emotional supports and some training in any areas of weakness will really help them. And so that is why we picked that particular project. We are doing that in six elementary buildings and one middle school building. We have four staff that are providing that social-emotional learning, direct intervention to students at risk in social, in the social-emotional areas. We had a monitoring visit in November. They took a look at our paperwork. Really, the monitoring visit is very focused on paperwork. We only had one small area of noncompliance, and that is that our data entry, our paperwork data entry was not matching our MSDS. So we had some inconsistencies. And so what we've done is investigate why that might be, and we found that we had some staff turnover and they weren't trained in, in the way they needed to be trained. We also learned that we had some screen changes in the data entry system, and we needed some clarity of our procedures. So what we are doing is putting some new procedures in place, putting them in writing, make sure we're providing proper PD so that we can solve that inconsistency of data. And then finally, in this area, we are doing a lot of work as a district because this is an area that we can't solve alone in special education. This is district work. And we are implementing alternatives to suspension and expulsion. We are engaging staff in implementing restorative practice and culturally-responsive practice. So those are critical areas for us. And this next slide talks about the continuum of service in special ed. We wanted to share with you all the kinds of programs that we have. And in special education, although we want all students in gen ed as much as they can be, we must, it is required by law that we have a continuum of service. And that's critical so that we can ensure that all students have programming that meets their needs. So here, I've just listed all of the kinds of programs we have that come out of our department, and really not all programs, I should say services. There are all kinds of services because special ed is certainly a service, not a place. And we're going to, the supervisors are going to be talking a little bit about those in more detail. The next thing I want to talk about is our work. What is it that we really focus on and what's really important to us to close the gap? We know that that is a task of ours, to ensure that students with IEPs are reaching their highest potential and that we are closing the achievement gap. And so two, there are, there's a couple particular things here that I want to point out. I call them the power sources, and they are two things that we've learned through research and our own experience that are absolutely required in order for us to move forward with closing the gap. And the first one I want to talk about is the, is the left side of the slide. Students with IEPs must be involved in effective core instruction in classrooms. They need very specific instruction in reading and in math. They need to be in front of gen ed teachers. They need that really effective instruction. And there's a couple things I've highlighted near the bottom that I think are really important. They need to be in general education environments, but they need instructional matches, meaning the teacher needs to understand the student and make sure that their teaching and facilitation style embraces the student's learning style. So we've got to have that match between the teacher and the students. We also know that accommodations, as written in IEPs, must be implemented 100 percent of the time, all, every accommodation, because those accommodations are written for a reason. We're trying to, we're trying to break down those barriers. And then universal design for learning is important, meaning proactively, teachers need to ensure that their classrooms are supporting all learning styles and that we're ready for all those learning styles. So students can learn the way they naturally learn. And so, and they also can express what they know in the, in, in a way that matches their style. So all of that stuff in those classrooms needs, needs to be really strong and happening every day. And then on top of that, the second power source is that on the right, which is that layer of specially-designed instruction, that's special ed. And this is that really critical research-based methodology. And the critical piece here is special ed must be a layer on top of that general education piece. It's not a replacement, it's an additional layer. It's more support. And so at the bottom, you see special ed is everyone's responsibility, can't work alone. Effective core instruction and specially-designed instruction and highly-skilled staff is really what we're going to look at for student success. And the next slide also talks about how important our work is as we connect it with teaching and learning. We are an integral part of teaching and learning, and, and it has developed over time where we are all working together, and all these different areas that, that's teaching and learning embrace are, have a big impact on special education. So they're all really important to us. And then finally, before I turn it over to the supervisors, again, is our focus of, our focus is closing the gap. We have five specific areas of what we want our work to look like. Because when we, when we met as, as teams, we said, okay, if our job is to close the gap, that's big. And so what are we going to focus on this year? What are we really going to put our efforts into? And we have five areas. We want to, one, develop very specialized instruction. We want to make sure that our teaching staff, our special education teaching staff are highly trained and have the tools, the time, and the training to really implement specialized instruction. We're going to talk a little bit more about this in the levels as well. We want to develop ongoing parent connection. We have something called CPAC, a Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. Over the last two years, three years, it's kind of drifted away. We want it back. But when we bring it back, we want to really, we want to ensure that it's revised to be a true advisory committee because that's its intent. We want to hear parent voices. And so we want to make sure that we create an environment where we can get parent voices and even student voices at the table to help guide our work. Then we want to ensure that we meet compliance. I talked about how important that was earlier. We want to ensure great classroom instruction. I also talked about that on the last slide. And then we want to refine and organize special ed staff. We want to analyze our service provision and say, is it, is it what we need? And do we have enough special education staff to give the time our students need? So we're going to talk about that in just a little bit as well. But right now, what I want to do is allow the supervisors to share, to share a little bit about their work in each level. And we're going to start with our preschool program, and I would like to introduce Jim Woodhams, who is our interim preschool supervisor, as our current supervisor is off for a bit. So.
And we do know each other.
Yes. Well, I'll just.
All right, thanks. Okay, first of all, thank you for having us tonight. I just want to start by saying, I guess iterating what a number of people said earlier today, we've got some great staff here. I've worked in lots of districts and it's, I'm very proud to be working here right now. So, so I supervise IPSEP, which is our infant preschool special ed program. That means we service kids from zero to six years old. What kind of job can you have where you get to serve babies? Okay? It's, it's a great job, actually. And our staff, again, is amazing. We, Julie mentioned IDEA, which is the federal law. Part B of IDEA is about birth to three services, which means that from the time a child is born until three years old, we can do evaluations for those students. They can be sent to us by pediatricians, families, anyone. And if there's a concern about developmental delay, we're responsible for evaluation and potentially providing services to those students. It does not mean that every student's going to end up with a disability. Our goal is to not have that student end up with a disability, to provide that early, early intervention. Each one of those students has an IFSP, which is Individualized Family Service Plan, which is focused on family. How does the family work with, teach this student in the natural environment versus us doing some magic thing on a Tuesday? We also have a group called Communication Builders where we have young students who have speech and language issues that we're trying to catch early, that we can intervene, and hopefully, again, they won't develop into kids who have true disabilities and need further service. Our preschool special education services and classrooms are currently at four different locations. Allen is sort of our hub, so to speak, because we've got three of our ASD center-based programs there for three- to six-year-olds. And we have one of our ECDD, Early Childhood Developmental Disability, classrooms there also. We have two classrooms at Field, two classrooms at Gallimore, and we also have a team teach situation at Erickson where one of our special ed staff works with the GSRP staff to provide service to eight students who were placed there basically by their IEP. On top of that, of course, we offer and provide as appropriate speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, so on, whichever is out there that the student needs. Our focus most recently has been on trying to increase the amount of inclusive programming that we do. It's a little more difficult in preschool because we don't have a modeled program that's beside us essentially, that's not a tuition-based kind of program, but we're working on it. And then the other thing, I'm sorry, my mouth gets so dry. Medications, anyway. The other thing is just, I think a lot of people are going to be saying this, but addressing the needs of students on this autism spectrum is a huge issue because of the increase in That's all I want to say. Thank you so much. Let me introduce Liz McCall, who is our elementary supervisor.
Hi. So at our elementary school level, we're focusing on developing the skills of our resource room teachers in several different areas. The first one is in using assessments, so looking at BAS data and the NWEA data to help us write measurable annual goals for our students. So really focusing on the tests that we're already giving and how we can impact student learning by understanding the outcomes of those tests. Progress monitoring through benchmark assessments in classrooms, research-based reading interventions. We have a couple of schools who are piloting a couple of different programs to see what, how we can best impact student learning. And looking at direct instruction in the resource room setting. We know that the biggest impact that we can have on students is teacher efficacy, so increasing teacher efficacy and their confidence that they too are experts in their field and that they can provide instruction to students. We're also looking at these district-based assessments to inform IEPs. The NWEA provides a lot of excellent data about where students are and what next steps for learning might look like. So we're working together to learn about how to use that data to inform those IEPs. And finally, we're looking at the social-emotional behavioral needs of students. Several schools are looking at different curriculums that they could implement. I'm working directly with one of our schools with the Zones of Regulation to support students. We're seeing students with higher behavioral needs at younger ages coming into our schools, so we want to make sure that we're ahead of that curve and we're supporting them appropriately in all of their settings. I'm going to introduce Jocelyn Clark, our middle school person.
Yay, middle school. All right, thank you for having us. I have the great joy of supervising middle school, our post-secondary programs, and our ancillary staff, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the three of those tonight. In our middle schools, our, our mission in middle schools with students with IEPs is to help them learn who they are as a learner, and we help them find their voice because we want them as ready for the park as they can be. We want them to have the biggest experience possible with everything the park has to offer. So we provide academic supports in an inclusive approach so that they can learn to, to be a learner in a big setting, so they get ready for the park. GOLDS is our post-secondary program for students with IEPs. And as many of you know, we now have an opportunity to expand our space, which we are quite grateful for, so thank you. You know, it really lets, it really lets the GOLDS team and our students know that, that you believe in their potential as much as we do. So, so thank you for that opportunity to expand. It'll give us an opportunity to expand some of the programs and some of the services that our students are able to, to take part in. And our ancillary staff, there are psychologists, social workers, and our occupational therapists. Over the last couple years, we've given them the charge of making themselves a resource to all staff, not just special education staff, but all staff. And as you can see, each of those groups has taken that task in a little bit of a different direction. Our psychologists produce, produce a monthly newsletter that's sent to all staff electronically, and they even do a little quiz survey at the end to see if people actually read it, so that's been kind of fun. And their staff training has involved connecting the assessments that they use and the assessments that are done as part of progress monitoring to what students look like in a classroom, so to help teachers see the connections there. Our social workers are really working on helping building teams, develop an understanding of database decision-making, often revolving around behaviors. And their training that they're providing, again, for all staff, is focused on trauma, depression, anxiety, and suicide awareness. Again, that, that social-emotional component. But again, the mission is to get the information out to all staff, not just the staff that work with students with IEPs. Our occupational therapists have a little bit of a unique approach. They look at students from the neurodiverse perspective. So they, they see a student in a classroom, and they see a student that's wiggling, but they have all these great and wonderful reasons why they're wiggling, and then all these supports that the teacher can put in place. So they too are doing training for all staff, and they've also developed an OT handbook, which has been distributed to all staff. And that's, that's kind of an if/then. So if a teacher sees this, then here's a few things for them to try with a student. And all the trainings from our ancillary staff have been very well-received, and we are very fortunate to have the team that we have. They're, they're a great group. And I am going to introduce Dennis McBride, who is our high school supervisor.
Hello, good evening. So I'm Dennis McBride at the park. We've got some great things at the park, but our kids are ready, like Jocelyn says, she brings them to us. Our service activities, the peer, we have peer-to-peer activities with our classes, and also after-school activities. Like some of our classes are human exploration service classes, which is a gen ed peer with a student with a disability, and we tie them together in that class, and we peel the adult's back. We have the, the gen ed peers do their work. We also have after, after-school clubs that we support, like PALS and other various clubs. The other partnership we do is with Michigan Rehabilitation Services. We have two programs. One's ICTA, that's a funding where Plymouth Canton gives a dollar and, and Michigan Rehabilitation gives us $2 back. But both of those are pre-employability skills classes, and so they, they run classes to teach the students what job they're doing, what job skill they're doing. Then they also have job coaches, and that, that varies. Some, some have a coach that goes and works with them on a regular basis. Some have a coach, get them going and kick them out, not kick them out, get them going, and they're on their own, they're working on their own, so that, it's all different vary, various situations on that student needs. We also have Unified Sports, which is, we've just gotten that on the park in the last three or four years, and that now is a consortium with eight different classes in the, eight different schools in the KLA. So now we compete interscholastically. We also have that in the athletic field, so the students can enter in their letter and they're in their varsity jacket and whatnot. And actually, you have a clip of that right after this. And we also have a micro, a micro business at the park, which is a soap biz, and that's run through the Cognitively Impaired Program, and they've gotten that up from, from the start, and, and now they're up and running and really successful on that. So, but let's run the clip of the sports. I'm going to introduce, as she's doing that, Renee Schmokel, who does the ASD programs.
Hi, thanks for having us here. I am the ASD coordinator for Plymouth Canton Schools. We have been running a center-based ASD program for over 25 years in Plymouth Canton. Currently, we have 132 students. We take from five different districts. We have programs at Allen, four sections at Allen. We have nine elementary classrooms, Dotson, Ferentz, Gallimore, and Tonda. We have two middle school classrooms at Liberty. We have three high school classrooms at Plymouth High, and we have three post-secondary programs that is located at Madonna University. Supports to the program are myself. We also have a social worker, a behavior specialist, and a behavior specialist parapro that helps within the program, along with our OTs and our speech therapists and our wonderful teachers. Highlights of our program, we use the START model, which is statewide autism research and resources and trainings, and that's out of Grand Rapids. And we, all the Wayne County programs use that. We also have many mainstreaming opportunities for our students in our classrooms. We really function on core content areas and strengthening our language and math programs as long as, along beside our language programs and our behavior programs. We use PBIS. We use many, many peer supports at every level. We also do at the secondary programs, employment training and job opportunities. And we have our autism walk in April. This year, it'll be April- This year it'll be April 27th, so come on out and walk and meet our families. Thank you so much. I'll turn it back over to Julie.
Thank you so much. Thank you, team. All right, I'd like to just close with this last slide that really summarizes the direction we're looking into in the next couple of years. So again, our mission to elevate every student every day, to close that gap, to make sure our students with IEPs are achieving at their highest potential. So what we realize is that we must be ready for every student, and that's our job. Students don't get ready for us, we get ready for them. And we must be willing to invest the time that each student needs, and we need to ensure that we have the staffing, the necessary staffing we need, and we need to make sure that that staffing is aligned to students' needs. So as we begin to look at our future, as we've analyzed our staffing needs, we really realize that we need more instructional time for kids. Our students with IEPs need more instructional time, and so we want to take a look at how we can accomplish that. And so we need continued emphasis on research-based interventions, but we know we need some additional resource room teachers to really support students in the way they need supported. We also need to increase our mental health supports. We know that we need increased in social workers. We have currently seven social workers that, that, that cover all of our district, and we have kids that need that mental health and that social-emotional learning support. We need mental health evaluations in order to respond to our students that might be experiencing trauma. And so we need some expertise that are different than what we have. That's been our big aha, that we really need to look outside the norm of what we usually bring in for our service providers, and we're going to, a behavior specialist is a common, a clinical behavior specialist is a common direction that we're taking a look. So you can also see several of the other things we want to do. We want to increase professional development for general education and special education teachers. We really want to continue our inclusion journey. We have continued work in disproportionality, and again, we want to make sure that we all have high expectations for kids with IEPs. And finally, we want to make sure that we're evaluating our opportunity gaps for kids with IEPs. We want to make sure that our students with IEPs have the opportunity to do everything any other student can do: sports, specific classes, everything they do. So we're beginning to analyze how many students we have with IEPs participating in those things, so we can see if there are any barriers, we can break them down. And so I, I want to close and, and thank you for this time and open it up for questions, but before I do that, I just want to give a shout out to our special education staff. We have incredible, incredible staff. We talked about this earlier, the wonderful teachers we have here, but in special ed, we certainly have staff that are focused, that are driven, that care so deeply about our students, and we so appreciate that. We have 130 parapros in our district that are just highly committed to our students, and we could not do this work without the incredible department and teachers that we have. So I shout them out and thank them. And open it up for questions, and thank you so much.
Any questions on this side? Okay.
I have a question. Very, very short question. How do you ensure compliance to the Individuals with Disabilities Act?
Yes, that's a great question. In IDEAIA, there are 750 compliance requirements, and I could probably list them all, I've been paying so much attention to them. So that's the first thing we do, is we know what's in the law. And so that, the second thing is, we do a lot of training for staff on how to, to meet those requirements. But one of the gifts we have is that RESA, our Regional Education Service Agency, has a system of documents and rules and regulations that they provide to us. So we use all of that, and it's consistent throughout Wayne County. And so we know by using that, that, that we're in compliance with all of our paperwork because they, they complete all the documents to ensure compliance. Then our job is to work with staff and train them on how to complete the documents correctly. And if you ask any special ed staff, they will probably tell you that we train them to death, that we are just constantly, constantly evaluating and, and improving our training. And then our supervisors actually review every IEP document that is completed, and that is quite a task, but that's, we know how important compliance is. So, so, and again, much of our work is driven by those compliance requirements. We do, if, if anybody asks why we do something, most often the answer is, because that's what the law tells us to do.
Just another point, is any of that audited by the state?
Yes, yes, indeed. We are monitored. First of all, that strand report that I talked about earlier, that's one way they monitor, but we, almost every year, the state comes out and, and pays us a visit. And they did, actually, just two months ago, they did a paper audit. We had to send a certain number of files to the state, and then we also had to send to the state our written procedures on various parts that are in IDEAIA, and they evaluate it and determine if they needed to come out. We are proud to say that we met compliance and they did not come out and visit because what they saw met compliance. And I, and we, we seem to always be hit every year, they like us way too much, and, but I think it's because we're so large and, you know, but, but that, we are carefully monitored by the state and by RESA. They also do follow-up monitoring visits.
Member Brooks.
Yeah, your program for zero to three kids, are they family members of students? Are they from this district, or where, where do they come from?
Yes, they are, they are all families within our school district, and, right, and, and we have kids, some, some kids right out of the hospital. So, yeah, so there's, there's, the students, the children are referred to us, and all of the families actually in our zero to six program, outside of our ASD component of preschool, are Plymouth Canton residents.
Okay, second question is, is there any parental payment that has to, that the parents have to do, like, pay, like for, yeah, tuition?
Right. And, and because it's a special ed program, it has to be free because it's free and appropriate public education, so it must be free.
Okay, and, and also in that early, in the very early years, is it, what are the differences between that and then like a daycare center? Are they just kids with special needs?
Yes, the, the children have to meet requirements, so just like other students, K-12, that have to have, they be, they're evaluated to determine their eligibility, to determine if they have a disability, so that happens first. And once they meet that requirement, then based on their areas of need, they're provided that service. And again, a lot of it falls in communication, in, in fine and gross motor areas of development, and then again, as Jim mentioned, that the, the service provision is very different. It's very much, it very much focuses on the family as the primary teacher. So it's, we work closely with families, and we do home visits, so we go into the family so that we can really help the family on their, on their own turf.
And that's what highly qualified staff?
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, highly qualified staff, all of, yes, all of our staff.
And one last question. From six, six to 18-month kids, how do you keep them from biting each other?
Yes, very, keep your hands away, keep your body parts away from them.
Member Sidhu.
Thank you for a really informative presentation. I appreciate that you mentioned the disproportionality numbers with the African-American kids being suspended four times higher than other students. And when you look at your focus slide, I didn't see how you were targeting that number to go down. So can you go back to your focus slide, please, and talk to us about how you're really going to target that gap with the suspension rates?
Yes, yes. Well, and actually, it's more on the last slide that we have, when I talk about the continued work in disproportionality, and, well, yeah, I want to go back and forth, and the disproportionality slide itself, because the work, the interesting thing about disproportionality is when the state comes and visits and monitors, they monitor paper, they, to see if our IEPs are done correctly, if our manifestation determination reviews, which are required meeting for students that are being suspended or expelled, if those are done correctly. But what we know is none of that is going to stop disproportionality. It is about how we are building relationships with students, how we are doing alternatives to suspension and expulsion, and that restorative practice piece. And we know that we, that's, that's a district, like, that's when we know the district must embrace this work, and it has to be done across the board as we work on, on, this will never decrease without us doing that district-wide work. So we really make sure we're connected with teaching and learning as they are working on things like restorative practice, because we know how important that work is to us. And building relationships, social-emotional learning, building relationships with kids, that, you know, that, we know that that's what is important. And so we have really focused our work on staying connected with teaching and learning because that work can't just come out of our section, it's got to come out of teaching and learning at large. So that's really what, what our focus is. And the, the restorative practice piece, I think, has been really, really, really critical in that work.
Well, thank you for acknowledging the fact that that is not an acceptable number.
Absolutely.
And to continue working on that.
Mm-hmm.
I have a second question. Oh, okay.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you, this was lovely.
I had a few questions. First of all, I had sent some questions about CPAC and the Wayne County Parent Advisory Committee to Monica, and received those answers earlier today, so thank you for that. I'm wondering, I have a few maybe sort of strange questions, maybe, maybe not, but on your slide about the required power source.
Yes.
When you're talking about instructional match, how, how does that work? Is it like a resource room teacher or a teacher consultant looks at the student and, just tell me how that works?
Sure, sure. That, that, that very critical instructional match piece, I don't know if, Nick, you can get back to that, the power source slide?
Page 34.
Yes. So what we're really talking about in an instructional match is really us teacher knowing a student well, and certainly special education staff help gen ed teachers know their students well, but it is about a teacher knowing the IEP well, having reviewed the IEP, because they really begin to learn a student's instructional style. They learn their strengths, they learn their needs, and the interesting thing about instructional match is it's what all kids need. It really isn't about students, just students with IEPs. It is what we want all teachers to know, you know, their students' learning styles inside and out, but it becomes even more critical for students with IEPs. So it's a teacher really getting to know the student's learning style. How is it that they express what they know? How is it that they bring information in? Are they a visual learner? Are they an auditory learner? You know, where, what, where are their frustration points? So that, so that, but the instructional match is the teacher knowing that, but then using that information as they facilitate learning in their classrooms, embrace the student's style, and, and incorporate it into their facilitation of their classroom learning.
So, does it look a little different? I'm just thinking, like, elementary school teachers have maybe 26, 28 kids in their class, and then at the high school, teachers have more kids in their classes, and they also have more classes.
Yes.
So how, how does that work with, when you have a teacher that might have 150 kids?
Yes, certainly more of a challenge. I think one of the things that also comes into play in secondary, and you guys, you know, feel free to add, but I think that's where some co-teaching comes into play. What, we, we do a lot of co-teaching at secondary for this very reason. It provides an opportunity for a gen ed teacher and a special ed teacher to come together, to teach together, and so everybody learns, and the, the special educator brings some of that real specific instructional match skill, and, and the gen ed teacher brings that really strong curriculum, and it's, and if done well, it's an absolutely magical combination. And so I think that's one of the strongest ways in secondary that we support that instructional match.
At the Park, we co-teach in almost one of the core. Sorry. At the, at the Park, we co-teach in almost all of the core instructional classes, Algebra I, II, Geo, Physical Science, everything, so they have, we don't have enough staff to do everything, but we do hit all the core for that.
Okay. And then I was also curious about, when you're looking at the slide about ancillary supports, just, you know, I was curious about if you could give us a few examples of classroom strategies that occupational therapists might teach staff about supporting the neurodiverse learners?
Mm-hmm. And, and I am solely taking this from attending their trainings, because they have taught me as much as they teach everybody else. But, you know, in our example of, of an elementary student that's a little bit squirmy, it, instead, you know, oftentimes, without information on neurodiversity, a teacher may look at that student and think, oh, they're not paying attention, oh, I wish they would listen, but when our OTs look at that student, they see a student that has an internal need to move, and they're, that student is working to self-regulate so that they can pay attention. And so what they do, what our OTs do is talk to the teacher about, okay, what are ways that we can build in movement for that student? And they have these, they have these little, these little rolly chairs that they have all over the middle schools now, and they have seat cushions that they, the kids can move on, because the idea is that student is looking to regulate their own learning, and we want to do the least intrusive things possible to help them to do that. You know, and, and, and part of that is also the sensory hallway that Dotson talked about. It's, it's the same connection. You know, how can we help students learn to regulate themselves that, that lets them get back on track without our intervention? Does that?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay.
Thank you. And then finally, I wanted to thank Renee for telling us the date of the Autism Walk. As you know, I like to come.
Good, good.
And I would like to invite all the board members to come with me and participate this year. I, I enjoy going. It's very casual, so you don't have to worry about being like, doing a long-distance run or anything, it's a walk. Also, we need to bid on the baskets because Dennis always wins.
I won nothing last year. I mean, my five girlfriends, that's what you do, you just go there and you win baskets. The last couple of years, I'm like, no, honey, that's kind of happened.
Whereas I think you got four, one year.
Yeah. We need to give them some competition. Thank you so much for your presentation. Are there any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now we're, we're getting down to business. Next up, we have action item 190261, Consider Approval of a Resolution to Purchase Additional Benchmark Assessment System Kits for Elementary Schools. It's a final reading. And do I have a motion on this?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion, consider approval of a resolution to purchase additional benchmark assessment kits for elementary schools. Final reading, action item 190261.
Support. My motion was made by Member Sidhu, or by Member Brooks, and supported by, or seconded by Member Sidhu. Dr. Bender, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, thank you, President Bornewinski. Teachers of students in grades three through five are very excited about the prospect of being provided with their own benchmark assessment kit. Teachers of students in kindergarten through grade two are finding having their own kit provides them with greater flexibility in administering the assessment during the winter testing period, and are looking forward to, again, using those kits during the spring as well. And so this evening, we are bringing forward for a final reading, a resolution to purchase additional kits for teachers in grades three through five. If approved this evening, the kits can be purchased and in schools in time for the spring testing window.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion from the board?
Fingers crossed in the audience.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you.
Next, we have Finance and Operations, Ms. Piaz. Remember, Kehoe is not here tonight, but hopefully, Member Brooks or Member, or Ms. Piaz, sorry, I'm going to elevate you to the board, I guess.
I'll introduce the topic, how about that?
Okay.
Before you, this evening is a first reading of a consideration resolution to purchase 14 buses from the 2015 bond fund. As you know, periodically, we do replace buses in the, in the district. We are seeking Uh, we are seeking, uh, seven IC conventional units, seventy-seven passenger gasoline-powered general education school buses, and seven rear-engine transit, eighty-four passenger diesel-powered, uh, general education school buses from Midwest Transit. Um, these will incur also, uh, two-way radios and four cameras as in all our other units. This will allow us to, uh, replace two thousand four through two thousand nine circa buses and allow us to, for our goal to maintain, uh, no bus lo- longer than ten years with an average of five years. Those highlighted in the attached, um, are the buses that we are intending to replace for a grand total of one point four three-three seven-six three point five-two dollars. That one point four million dollars, well, again, will come from the two thousand fifteen, um, bond fund. This was discussed at the, uh, last, uh, F and O meeting, um, with the entire committee present. And Mr. Peterson is here if you have any technical questions on the bus, and I'm sure, um, Member Brooks can, um, discuss anything additionally you might have as well.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I went to the meeting. It was very informative.
Yes. It was a good meeting.
Heard a lot about the buses.
Yep. Okay. All right, well, that's a first reading, so, um, would you like to introduce the next first reading?
Thank you very much. Also discussed at that F and O meeting was the Discovery Middle School partial roof replacement. As you may or may not know, we had some leaking over the gym, um, which is, uh, the gym floor has been recently, um, redone, and so, we're seeking to replace that, that section of roof over the, um, Discovery Middle School, um, Gymnasium with an estimated budget originally voted on by this board, or by the former board, I should say, um, of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on November the twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Um, on Thursday, um, February twelfth, seven bids were opened for the work related to this project, even if it was a snow day. And we were here with, um, Brian Gessom, uh, from McCarthy and Smith, who's also here to answer any questions you might have. Um, the final amount, um, uh, will be awarded to Advanced Roofing of Westland Michigan in the amount of one hundred and five, um, thousand nine hundred dollars, again, funded from the two thousand fifteen bond proceeds.
Are there any questions? I have a question.
Sure.
Um, when is it proposed that this work would be done?
It would be summer.
Okay. What are we doing in the meantime to make sure we don't have, um, leakage?
Uh, you'll correct me if I'm wrong or come to the mic, but I believe we put a partial patch on that area so it would not leak during the interim time. I don't know, Mike, if you wanna come to the mic and...
Mike, Mike, there.
We'll have to make you work, so.
We've just been performing routine maintenance on it and, uh, having, uh, service calls as needed to get us through to the weather, uh, breaks. We, we need to wait till the weather's warm enough to do the project.
Right. Understood. I just, and, spring tends to be rainy, so, um...
Right.
Just wanna make sure we don't have to also replace a gym floor.
No, we're, we're staying on top of it.
Okay.
Not literally on top.
Well, you could.
Figuratively.
You're not out there standing there?
Every day.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now at follow-up board questions. We don't seem to have an F.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, that was fun.
So, the outstanding items I have from before are the dates for professional development and training with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and Growth Works and the alignment to the curriculum.
So, we offered in board notes, um, actually, as a Google Doc so that you can see the, um, training that is scheduled now through the end of the school year as well as activities that are prepared for students. Um, but we gave it as a Google Doc for view because that will be, continue to be updated. Um, as you remember, Steve giving his presentation, he was one person, so trying to work to, to get all of our staff trained is, is going to be a process. Um, so, if you just continue to pay attention to that, um, you'll see as it updates when we get into next year.
Um, I, I did see that, did, was there anything from Growth Works or was that all, um, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention?
That was all, yes.
Okay. Um, do we have any plans with Growth Works?
Yes, remember, if you recall, Growth Works, um, will continue to work with us. They had talked about doing some podcasts and things of that nature, not in the professional development sense. The training that we were asked to bring back was from the suicide prevention, but, um, uh, from Growth Works, Brian, working with us to do podcasts and things along those lines.
I met with Brian today and he said probably within the next month, those podcasts will be done.
Okay. Okay. What's the title of that Google Doc that you just mentioned?
I'd have to look it up, it's in notes.
It was in board notes, there was a link, yeah. Okay, um, so, I'm, I'm thinking about if we, or can we take this off or...
I would hope that that would satisfy, but knowing that, kind of, the, the idea is making sure that you have the dates, the plan, but it is tentative and you always have access.
Yeah, it's, 'cause, I mean, it'll change over time.
Yeah.
As you get more information put on it. Um, I guess I'm comfortable with taking that off.
The document's called PCCS Suicide Prevention Work and Training Schedule twenty nineteen.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, bid out process for starting blocks at the Salem High School pool, I think that was also in board notes.
Yes.
Okay. Did that satisfy your, your need? I think you were probably, John, you were probably the one who was behind that.
Yeah, no, I, so, I didn't hear what you said.
So, it was, um, the information was in board notes.
Okay.
Um, so, did that satisfy the request?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Um, the information on funding of activities, clubs, and athletics in which programs are no-cut. So, we got some of that information.
We got the funding information, um, I believe as a part of the presentation. Do we have the no-cuts that are in there?
No, but we can add it this week.
Okay.
I don't think there was, I think there was information on, um, the funding of the different athletic programs, but I don't know if there was activities.
Yes, it was inclusive of athletics activities. The only thing, they had a side note at the bottom about the boosters. The ones that are not on a part of our general fund would be those that are supported by the booster clubs.
Okay.
But we will still have outstanding, the information about the no-cut sports from the athletic department.
Okay. Um, and then, the information on grade point average data on students who participate in activities and clubs.
So, that's still outstanding. I recall that was gonna be a little bit more difficult to...
Yes.
To, to get, so they'll, some of them, they won't be able to get, the ones that they're able to, they're working on that.
Mm-hmm. And Hall of Fame or similar activities for, um, for activities in other programs.
I do want to, um, give an update on that and also a request to have that removed as outstanding item, and I'll tell you my rationale behind. So, immediately from the, the presentation, the team went back to work in talking with the, um, high school staff. I think that, uh, Bill Key, for example, had a, a conversation, very excited about this. Um, the, the, so, these are plans that they'll engage in conversations. I remember that Trustee Kehoe said, you know, give us back whether or not yes or no they'll do it. Um, the piece, in terms of leaving it, is an outstanding item. I think something that I wanna respect is that, in terms of our purview or our role, that's nothing that we're requiring that they do, so to check back to say, this is the deadline when it's gonna get done. I think it was a suggestion that we offered that they're very much embracing and working on conversations around that, so I don't see that as something that's an outstanding. We can always just update in board as things progress over time, um, but didn't really think that that was in our purview to come back and say, by this time, give me that date of which that is done.
Okay. Um, I think the idea is around equity for students who, um, engage in activities and don't really get recognition for that.
So, absolutely, in terms of them bracing, embracing that idea, and there are various ways that they're gauging already, and, um, but to say in a prescriptive manner that I'm asking that they do a Hall of Fame is something that...
I don't, I, I don't think it has to be the Hall of Fame. I think that was just the example you used.
Right, so, I, that's what I'm asking. In terms of our question, Hall of Fame for activities and other programs, that that's removed as an outstanding item. I think that, um, what surfaced from a part of the presentation is the desire to say, how do we create equity? What we have is a willingness and staff that are now actively engaging in opportunities to say, how can we continue to expand? You know, they had conversations around signing days for, not for colleges, but for, um, post-secondary experiences and jobs. So, they're, they're looking at, that in itself takes time. I, I, when they talked about the Hall of Fame, if you remember that, we just started that three years ago, they added one school, I think, per year. And so, um, having a deadline for here to say, we'll have this as an outstanding item for the next three or four years, um, I think is a little bit more problematic, but to say that we shared, um, an idea and the, the district, uh, staff is embracing that idea and actively working on ways to continue to, and, and I, you know, saying in terms of monitoring or giving feedback or update, I think that that's something that you can expect from us. Keeping it as an outstanding item is something that would be a little bit more problematic. And we just ask that we work in a different way to, to, um, share information on how we continue to evolve in that area.
Can you just give us an idea of maybe what's been talked about?
I, I think I just shared those? Is, uh, is any...
I don't think it was anything that, I don't know, I, to me, I didn't hear something that sounded like, uh, um, an actual event or something like that.
So, that wouldn't be an actual event that's been established, as I said, conversations. And what I don't wanna do is get into a role of saying, we are, uh, directing you to create this program because I think that we'd be, we, getting out of our purview or our roles here. And so, I think that as we bring people forward to have presentations and they share, um, the things that we're doing, and we, on a path to continuous improvement, are giving feedback to say, this was really good, and our staff is saying, yes, we agree that it's good, and now, giving them the autonomy, creativity to come back and do some amazing things for our kids. And I think that, um, we can trust that that will happen.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna ask the rest of the board. What, what do they think about taking this off?
I, so, my, my worry is that if there's not, I mean, I don't wanna say you have to do this, but I would like to make su- like, circle back and make sure something is being done. 'Cause, you know, people are real, very busy, I'm sorry, people are very busy, and I don't want this to be dropped because it is really important because we have a lot of kids that are doing really great things, but they're not always acknowledged. You know, like, and I understand some of it is because the signing day is a specific event. You know, you have to do it that day. Um, but, you know, kids are getting, you know, money for other activities they engage in, and I don't know as a district that we're really acknowledging and celebrating that. And I think that that could be a really good attraction to parents, thinking about, you know, you know, because the park looks big and scary to parents when you have, you know, little kids. But if you see all these great things and you're like, wow, look at these kids got, you know, this 'cause they did theater in high school, um, you know, that's a big thing. And I, I just don't wanna see it dropped.
So, definitely, I would say, we, none of us wanna see it dropped. I don't want us, to get us in a place of micromanaging at board and, and district leadership level of saying, hey, I need to say how you're going to celebrate kids within your classroom or how you're gonna celebrate kids within your building. That's not really the role, so if you think...
No, I don't think we wanna do that. I think we just want...
So, we'll kinda look at the Dotson presentation.
We just wanna celebrate.
Yes, and we're all, so, you don't hear me saying that we won't celebrate, but just coming back to say, as a timeline, what are those ideas going to come out, back, and what Hall of Fame for these activities is something that I'm asking that we work and trust, that our staff is really engaged in finding multiple ways to celebrate the amazing things that our students are doing across activities, extracurriculars, um, their, their post-secondary decisions, and we'll continue to highlight that as we've done our school improvement plan, knowing that that's now a priority, continuing to highlight different ways that, um, we're working to find new approaches to, to equity in terms of that celebration.
Okay. Um, Member Sidu?
So, I, I see your point. Is, can you give us a, maybe a time or date in terms of by May or June, you would give us an update about what ideas your staff has come up with and share those ideas, knowing that these conversations are going to be ongoing? We understand that.
Yeah.
Um, again, I think we all understand that we don't wanna see this dropped. It's, it's a, uh, big deal to all of us, but understand that this is something that you and your staff really need to work on and have those continued conversations. So, maybe May, June, we could get an update about some of those conversations and ideas?
So, I would say it's always a priority to update you on ideas. Once again, I wanna always respect process and making sure that we're not directing or holding, so we always are holding everyone in our district accountable to making sure that we're doing things that provide equity and opportunities for all students. And so, we can continue to update you on those, um, activities without, I don't wanna get into a place where I'm saying, by this deadline. So, if we're saying this training, this is something that's district-generated, I can give you this deadline, check this box, this is the training plan. When we talk about an idea or suggestion, um, to say then, you know, the board needs to know by this date when you're going to implement their idea about this, is not where I'm comfortable, um, with, with our staff. So, I will say, absolutely, I, we can keep you up to date as ideas come. Um, I can just do that as a part of board notes, but as an outstanding item with a deadline is what I'm just suggesting that, and I, I hate to word, use that word trust, but you can hold me accountable, like, I am your employee, so you can ask me about those things. And so, that's information that I can provide you, but I, at the same time, don't wanna dictate for all of the employees here that you have to implement this Hall of Fame document. Just working for equity with the lens to make sure that we celebrate the accomplishments of all students is really, um, an idea that the staff is eagerly, um, embracing.
And I wanna put it out there that if, if you need help from the board on this, like, if you need help generating, generating ideas or any, I mean, we don't wanna dictate, but we, if you need support from us on this, we're happy to.
Yep, so, I hope that's not what you're hearing, that there's not resistance at all. Our, our staff loves to celebrate students.
No, I'm just saying that...
So, the help is the great ideas, and that's what we like to do when we come and we showcase and we highlight because there's so many things that happen on a daily basis in our schools, and we really don't get the opportunity, a lot of times, even share. So, there's so many things that are currently in place, and that really provided an avenue to say, hey, let's celebrate more, let's bring more of a communication too, but also think about additional things that we can do. So, the support is just saying that you are all on the same page as we, we're in this together, and we wanna celebrate and create additional opportunities for kids, not because we're directed to do it, because that's how we're wired. It's the right thing to do.
Okay. All right. Everybody okay? Member Brooks?
I think as, as a board, we kinda set the vision of what we'd like to see, and if we do wanna see that all the sports or activities have some kind of recognition, that's what our vision would be for, um, is to make sure that everybody that takes part in something gets accolades for it. And so, that's why we're concerned on not just letting things drop, you know, and we want...
I think, I think that's understood.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, we, we, you know, I, I don't know exactly how many that we're talking about right now, but, um, I would sure like to see at least something from everything that we have, um, presented to our, uh, parents and to the community so we can use it for some, any type of, uh, picture on how the district is doing.
And so, don't disagree with that by any means. I don't, I want you to hear clearly, we're on the same page, where we just kind of talk about roles, and I wanna make sure that we always clearly define. So, to that point, your role is to hire and evaluate me to set policy, approve policy, and, 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 um, to set the budget and approve the budget. And so, we don't wanna get into places where we're then at a board level or district level directing that these activities to that, we don't wanna micromanage. That's not, when we talk about morale and, 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 and working in this together, that we don't wanna get to that, that space. So, what I'm saying and sharing with you is sharing of ideas and collaboration, that's the culture of our district that we're really trying to encourage in giving our staff the freedom to express, to take risks, to do, think outside of the box and find opportunities to, to always elevate every student every day. So, really giving them that support and saying, hey, we're all on the same page, they will go to work, I promise you that. And I, as your employee, will update you periodically, not because you're directing that, I, I, just, this changing the way that we see it, it's because it's the right thing to do. And as we're working to get better each and every year, I will, I, I look forward to And as we're working to get better each and every year, I will, I look forward to updating you on some of these opportunities that I already know the conversations are happening and people are encouraged by that. And so let's, so in terms of your timeline, by the end of this year, I would love to just update you on some of the conversations that are taking place in the form of board notes.
I think that's what we're asking.
We're okay with that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any concerns on this side?
No, I trust the superintendent's going to do a great job with everything that she has to do.
Okay, all right, so we're taking that off. Okay. So, I think the next thing on our agenda says adjournment. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Sidhu. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Any opposed? Motion passes six zero, and we are now adjourned.